Yes.
Okay. All right. So we are live now. This is the first time that the village board of the Village of Cooperstown has zoomed a meeting live to our YouTube channel. It is April 13th at 6:30 PM. Things have certainly changed in our lives over the past few months, but I think it's really important that we maintain a semblance of our traditional board meetings. So if you don't mind, I'm going to share a flag image. And I would like us all to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have, the reason we are meeting tonight and for members of the public who are tuning in, by New York state law, the budget for a village is due by March 20th. And our board had several preliminary meetings, workshops, and did assemble our budget well in advance of that. Am I sounding okay?
Sorry.
Okay. And we obviously submitted that before March 20th. Many things have changed. We need, by New York state law, to have a public hearing on our budget by April 15th. The governor did not waive that requirement. He did waive the fact that we can have a meeting without the public present. We have advertised this meeting in a public hearing for our village budget. And we have asked that written comments and be sent via regular mail and email. So I will, at this time, open up the public hearing for the 2020-21 Village of Cooperstown budget. Terry, did we receive any comments?
We received one comment from Scott Schwartz, who owns 95 Pioneer Street, that his recommendation is that the budget needs to be greatly reduced because of the reduced tax revenue due to the coronavirus. He predicts that the tax revenue will be about the same as when Dreams Park just started becoming popular in the late 1990s, early 2000s. That's the extent of the comment.
Great, thank you. And we all recognize that things have really changed. And we are planning to look tonight at our, after we approve several change orders and do some other physical business, we are planning to look at the revenues. We know sales tax will be down. We know paid parking will be down. So we know what revenues we're going to be looking at cutting. And in the same side, we need to be looking at the expenditure side and also eliminating things to pretty much equal what we're recognizing as we will not get in the revenues. So that public hearing is open. We'll come back to the budget, but I want to move on with the agenda. We have a couple of change orders for projects that we're undertaking right now. We have a change order for, at the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. It is in the amount of $5,196. And you have all of that documentation and paperwork in front of you. Is there any question?
If I may, this is Joe. I wanted to give a little context for this change order. You know, this project is a substantial one. And over the course of the implementation of the wastewater treatment plant project, we've had, to date, 14 change orders or change requests that we've had to consider. Of them, in total, they represent a quarter of a million dollars in an increase. Now, the lion's share of that goes to a storage building that we added to the project in the amount of $230,000 roughly. But we've had some change orders that were, that resulted in credits to us and others that turned out to require further expenditures. So if you back out the new building, we've had about, so far, $20,000 in change orders that have cost us, and we've gotten about $11,000 in change order reductions. So it's about a two-to-one change in in these change orders where the price of the project has increased. Now, on the, on this particular project, this is for about a $5,000 change having to do with the electrical network. I've discussed this with Delaware and with Mitch and with John. And we're, the purpose here is to recommend, in favor of it, those of us who reviewed it, will recommend to the board that it be approved. But, you know, these projects are very difficult to manage because there were things we might have expected our contractor to have identified. For example, this is basically a fundamental wiring question that arose in this project and how the circuit breakers matched up with the voltages in the wires, in the wiring. And not a perfect world, but in a, in a good world, we, our consensus is, and I want Mitch to weigh in, if I'm misstating or misremembering anything, these are things that should have been caught. So the reason I want to bring this up is that throughout, and I know we've had, you know, challenges with other projects that we're doing because we're doing big things and big things sometimes have little issues associated with them that still add up to a lot of money. But I did want to put in context what this change order represented. A slip that I think should have been caught if the as-built drawings had been in use and had, you know, more attention been paid as the project estimators had looked more closely at what the existing plant looked like. I will also say, just in context too, with the storage building, we had, we have, we have three issues that had been resolved, but in less than optimal fashion. There was a roof eve. You would think that would be a simple matter, but a roof eve that was misdesigned. And so we did a workaround with a gutter that will probably be less permanent and effective, although largely resolved the issue of what should have been, instead, an eve overhang that would have just drained water farther from the building. But they didn't, they didn't look, they looked at the building as not having eaves elsewhere, and this was the only feature of the building that required an eve, and they overlooked it. We didn't get an access door between the storage building and the press room, the belt press room. I don't know how that was missed. And we don't have double egress. That is two means of egress for safety in the, in the, in the storage room. And then, of course, we had the garage door height issue. So I say this not particularly by way of criticism for, of anyone. It's more a, to describe the scope of the challenge to get everything right. And there will be slips between the cup and the lip in these projects. Everybody's acting in good faith, trying to get it done, but these are big responsibilities. And I guess I just want people to know what everybody's doing to make this work and especially our staff who has identified these problems or been presented with these problems, sometimes not in the best timing by the contractor. So with that, we can turn to further discussion of this or action. As I say, our recommendation is to approve it. Richard?
Moved to approve.
Can you let me, Joe, can I please be the one who recognizes people? So I did want to say thank you for that summary. You know, this is a big project, $9 million project. And so we recognized we had some change orders initially, and now this 5,196. So Richard, go ahead.
Moved to approve change order number two, electrical service modification in the amount of $5,196.
Thank you, Richard. Is there a second? Second by Jim?
I do have one comment. Actually, considering the scope of the project, and as you said, taking out the storage building, $10,000 of change orders on an $8 million project is really unbelievably good.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second by Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a double day project change order. And again, you have the paperwork on that.
I'm sorry, this is Joe. There are two more change orders.
Oh, for that, oh, I'm sorry.
For the wastewater treatment plant. These total less than $1,000. One is to remove a beam that is in the way of conduit installation, and the other is to remove a shed, a small shed roof from the side of the building that shelters an existing electric panel and electrical panel that will be replaced.
Terry, do we have that in our packet?
No, but they were emailed on Friday afternoon.
So did everyone get a chance to look at those?
Look, I have a change order here. I don't have the discussion, but I do have the change order in my packet.
Yes.
That's the one we just approved by.
Just to clarify, Richard, there were, these are change orders, I think, 15 and 16. Am I right, Terry?
You're correct, yes.
And so, as I say, one is in the amount of $580 for a, the steel beam removal that's needed in the, in the room where we have the generator, and it's needed for conduit and electrical conduit installation. And the second one is about $480 or so. And it has to do with removing intact a small shed roof that overhangs the existing electrical panel on the RBC building so that the new panel can be installed. And Mitch, if I'm, again, weigh in, we, John, you and I and Andy all agree that that is appropriate.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, we did get them emailed. I think I thought, since it wasn't on the agenda, that we might be approving those at our meeting later this month. But if everyone feels they've reviewed them and is comfortable with that, is there a motion to approve that, those change orders?
Also moved.
So, I'm sorry, Cindy, you moved it?
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion to approve change order number 15 in the amount of $580.64 and change order number 16 in the amount of $483.86.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there a second?
And.
Second by Jean.
And one comment, if I may. The reason for not delaying this until our next meeting is that the contractor said that this is kind of a critical path item that they need to take care of so that they can get other, you know, jobs in lines that are stacked up behind it, done as well, so.
Okay, great. So we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of the change orders? Say aye, thank you. Moving on, we have a double day project change order. This is for our electrical contractors. Still seeing, you have that paperwork in your packet. It is in the amount of $5,530. This is, in the course of the project, the arch that is going to go at the entrance of Double Day from Main Street had to be set further back from the stone columns because of the foundation on that existing, you know, nearly 100-year-old stone wall, even though it was repaired. It was felt that for security, et cetera, we should step the archway posts back. And when we did so, it was felt they needed some additional lighting on them because they're kind of behind the wall. So this is solely to place two in-ground lights to shine on the arch. Is there a motion to approve that change order?
So moved.
Moved by Richard, second by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If there is an additional double day change order. This involves the contractor, Smith Site Development, who is doing the work solely on the 1939 grandstand renovations. At one time, there were little drinking fountains in our dugouts. And in the restoration of that facility, we are returning sort of a drinking fountain, water bottle fill station in the dugouts. It was unknown that previously there had been really no drainage on those prior fountains. It actually just gone in the wall and gone down towards the foundation. So this is an increase of 1,464, a change order in that amount to provide the proper ductwork to get this to our stormwater system. So is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Cindy made the motion and seconded by Richard? Is that you? Yep, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So those are the change orders. We are moving on to the Walnut Street parking regulation change and discuss setting a public hearing. This isn't the first time, and you have that material, which, with a very nice map too, that Cindy provided at our meeting previously. And I think that was actually, was it in February, Cindy, or at some point? I can't even remember. But I will let Cindy talk about the proposed Walnut Street parking regulation and whether we feel we should set a public hearing for our April meeting or a later meeting.
Right. So we did look at some potential changes to Walnut Street. We set the public hearing in January. The public hearing was held in February. At that point in time, what we were looking at was potentially changing parts of Walnut Street to two-hour parking while still keeping the restrictions on time related to the fact this is near the school. So that would be morning and afternoon, no parking, and then two hours during the day. It became clear at that public hearing, you may recall, that that was a solution that was probably going to cause more confusion and the need for a lot of signage. And, you know, there were probably other ways to do this, and the people who spoke at that public hearing made that clear. So we did not vote on that particular local law change and said, well, we'll address it at the next meeting. This was in your packet last month. We were still getting used to Zoom and public hearings by distance and all that sort of thing. It's actually an issue that I don't feel can be put off until we get back to face-to-face relations. And the reason is that the problem has really only been exacerbated by the fact that school is not in session. So the current law says, on school days, parking is restricted. But school has not been in session. And clearly, individuals, particularly those working at Basset, have decided to park on Walnut Street as the current law allows, really creating quite a bit of congestion on Walnut Street close to Riverside Drive. That was worse when the parking lot construction was going on because then we had large vehicles in addition to people parking on the side of the road. But right now, we have temporary no parking signs up, which, you know, is not a great solution. So this is, I think, what we've talked about. We've certainly talked about it in streets. We've talked about it at trustee meetings previously. I think the real question at this point is if we do go ahead and set a public hearing, if mailing this information to folks who live on Walnut Street in addition to a public notice in the newspaper would be a way that we could solicit input for a public hearing to be held at the end of the month.
Their thoughts on that?
Little idea.
I think that's a good idea.
Anyone else?
I agree. I think, Jim, you were on mute. You tried to say something.
Jim, are you on mute?
You're on mute, Jim.
I'm on mute, thank you. I said I did support that. Can you hear me? I said I supported Cindy's.
Yes, thank you, Jim. We heard you now. So I think there is a consensus that, you know, we do have a mechanism. We are streaming these meetings live. We will ask for input via email and written postage mail. And I think this is a situation, judging by the emails complaints that some of us have gotten on the parking on that street, I think it's good to try and come up with a resolution for it. So Cindy, you going to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to set for our April 27th regularly scheduled meeting, a public hearing to consider proposed changes to parking on Walnut Street.
There's the motion seconded by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next thing on our agenda is this COVID-19 Relief and Recovery Fund for Atsico County as proposed by the Community Foundation of Atsico, New York. And you have in your packet a draft of a resolution. The background on this is, I'm sure many of you know that there is a group that is worked to form a community foundation of Atsico County to serve as a 501(c)(3) organization that people can make donations to that will then benefit our area of the county. It had formed and originally was looking really at a housing projects, which were very much in line with the village's comprehensive plan and something that we would like to see. But with the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, there obviously have become a lot more concerns and immediate concerns in our communities. And they have quickly gotten off the ground this whole COVID-19 Relief and Recovery Fund for Atsico County. And it's a way for private foundations, individuals, businesses, and others to support the efforts of the nonprofit sector to respond to various needs. That's from your resolution. This is, I know in, when this came out in the packet, there were some people saying, well, what are we doing for the businesses? I have communicated, I think, with all of you that I have a daily regional governor's phone in about COVID-19. So that kept me very abreast of things. But I was also invited by Atsico County, Alan Ruffles, the treasurer, to serve on the Atsico County Economic Task Force. You may have noticed, we had a business survey link on the village website. We got close to 400 survey responses for businesses. Cassandra Harrington of Destination Marketing is spearheading that economic task force. There's a Support Atsico Now group as well. A lot of information for businesses on how to access a lot of the Small Business Administration funding, et cetera. So with that is being looked at. Harry Levine, who is involved with the Community Foundation of Atsico County, wanted us to know that this is really an organization that people could donate funds to if they wanted to help. And it specifically has to go to 501(c)(3) organizations. It can't go to sort of individuals or businesses, but it might go to an organization that supports businesses or helps them develop their websites to create a online presence to continue their sales at a time we don't have tourists in the community, et cetera. So that's just giving you a little background on this, this proposal. Cindy?
I'm in favor of the proposal, but there's two places where I'd like to see wording changes. And I did speak to Lou Alstead to see whether that was even possible at this point, and he felt that it was. In the last two where, whereas clauses, I think it makes sense to change the verb support to encourage. I think support could be misconstrued to be a financial commitment, which I don't think was ever the intention of the, the resolution. And in both of those clauses, I would delete by the nonprofit sector, just because I think that it's confusing, the way that it's worded, and it sounds as if funding might be going to the nonprofit sector as opposed to being distributed through the nonprofit sector.
Okay, all right. I like your one for concern, what was it? Desires to encourage efforts by the nonprofit. I did have a couple phone calls when this was emailed to me. And I made it quite clear that there would not probably be any village funding. And I know Gary Herzig in Oniana also had expressed that. No one, we're all recognizing that we would not be able to get financial support. So that is a great change there. I think what they were trying to stipulate there, because when I initially started inquiring specifics on it, that's why he had indicated that they, by the creation of this foundation, can only give to nonprofits.
That is absolutely true, but in most cases, nonprofits can then redistribute the money through a means.
That is exactly what they would be doing. Yeah, so maybe what it needs to say, to support efforts, you know, but that's what he was, I think, trying to do, to support efforts by the nonprofit sector to respond to those needs, to distribute. Would you rather it said something like that?
I just don't know if it's important for our sake to recognize that the money's going to the nonprofit sector. I feel like that's.
Oh, okay.
Dressed earlier. I mean, for their needs, it's certainly important. But for the village's needs, I'm not sure that that's a critical part of our endorsement.
Okay. I just wanted it made clear because that was a question, you know, I know when Gary asked and several of us asked about that, they had to make it clear that it couldn't necessarily go to, you know.
Individual businesses.
Individuals or an organization that wasn't a 501(c). I'm sorry, Joe, you had a question?
Yeah, just Cindy, could you recite your language again? It made sense to me. I just want to make sure that when we vote, we know that we're on the same page.
So the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th whereas clause would read, where the border trustees of the Village of Cooperstown desires to encourage efforts to address the pressing needs created by the virus and responses to its impacts. And whereas the Community Foundation of Atsico County has created the COVID-19 Relief and Recovery Fund for Atsico County to provide a way for private foundations, individuals, and others to encourage efforts to respond to those needs.
Oh, efforts so striking by the nonprofit sector.
That's what I would prefer, but others disagree. I'm certainly willing to consider that.
Any other thoughts? Mac?
Yeah, well, so I actually had one previous question. I think I was muted. So when it says individuals, oh, you know, no, actually, I do understand. And I think that getting rid of the nonprofit sector is a good idea. So I'll support Cindy on that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Nope. All right, a motion to provide this endorsement of this COVID-19 Relief and Recovery Fund with the change. with the changes noted in both the one, the fifth clause and the sixth clause by deleting by the nonprofit sector and changing support to encourage. Is there a motion for that? By Mac?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah. And a second by, by Joe. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. At this point, I would like to re-close the public hearing on the budget with the recognition that we plan to utilize this time while we're connected and at a legally noticed meeting to make some changes to the budget. We recognize that this won't be necessarily the final one because there are certain aspects of the budget that I think we'll have a clearer picture on by our meeting on the 27th of this month. And so some of those, you know, we can talk about, and so we have it in our radar, but it will have a clearer sense, I think, in two weeks, what might be possible this summer for our tourist things, et cetera. So I would like to work through our budget much the same way that we did when we had workshops and were taking it sort of page by page. I know we've all had this budget and since our last meeting in March, we've been reviewing our budgets, all of us independently at home to come up with areas where we recognize changes would be made. So I would like to start on page three, which is our general fund revenues. And work down, I know probably much like me, you highlighted certain areas where we know we're going to have to make changes. The first one that pops up is under non-property tax items, sales and use tax. As I mentioned, I have gathered data from the county. They have put together their own kind of statistics on how much they feel their sales tax will decrease. And I've also utilized the New York Association, New York State Association of Counties, which for all the counties in New York State has developed two scenarios. One is kind of a mild scenario and one is a severe. And the mild, they are indicating would be for Atsico County about a 5.1% drop, which equates to about $2 million in less sales tax. It's about close to 50,000 less in actual anticipated sales. So for us, because we get
When you need to face the mic, you need to face the microphone. When you turn your head away.
Sorry, you can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
When you turn your head away, we can't hear you.
All right. So that is a $2 million tax loss for the county, which would equate to about a 20,000 tax loss for us. The severe scenario is closer to 15% and that would equate to about a $60,000 less for us in sales tax. Now, I will say that the county also did their own figures and they they had a more interesting way to do it. They showed it really dropping now and really in the fall picking up again. I don't know what data they were sort of using on that. But for instance, their mild sales tax scenario had a 20% decrease until October, 15% increase remainder of the year, et cetera. So theirs could range up to, could range higher is the only way to currently see in the New York State Association one. So I think we recognize that we're going to get quite a bit less in sales tax. We had put in our tentative budget 370. And we have in front of us on our tentative budget, we have essentially the past four years completed and also the 2019, 20 budget. One thing I do want to point out because we did get a sales tax summary prior to the village last, at our last meeting. And if you looked at that, you would see that we received as of March 23rd, a payment and we were for our fiscal year, which again is June 1st through the end of May, 254,261. And of course, we forecast that we, how closely we will come to our 2019, 20 anticipated budget of 360,000. So we will be impacted this year by our, at this point, we've only had in for the month collected through January. So we're going to be hit with the March, April and May will be in this year. That's something to think about. So June, when we start our sales tax collection for the next fiscal year, will be starting to emerge a bit. I'm just pointing those things out. Thinking of all this, so the fact that the county could see anywhere from 20,000 to 90,000, 90 million, 20 million to 90 million less in sales tax revenue, the county saw 20 to, what was the other, 60,000. I felt that the minimum we should be taking 60,000 of that sales tax line. And that's the rationale for it. So that would drop us from our tentative align 370 to 310 for $60,000. Is there any one who feels differently about that? Okay. Moving on.
May I just ask a question? This is Joe. If everybody would mute their systems, we, there's some feedback, I think Gene was trying to point that out. There's some feedback coming through that garbles your, and I don't know if it's from your own system or from somehow it's bouncing in and out of ours. So there's like a echo.
Okay, I will mute mine when I'm not speaking. How about that? Does that work better? Or is it now sounding better already? It sounded better. Yeah, I could hear it before too.
If everyone who's not talking mutes, we should be good.
Thank you. Cindy has provided some data on parking lots. And I, if there's nothing else on page three between sales and use tax to 1721, parking lots and garage fees. If no one else had anything in between there, let's go to that. And I will let Cindy talk about that revenue.
All right. So we're talking about the parking lots and garage fees. And of course, this is a situation that is impossible to predict at this point because it's hard to know what June will hold, much less what July and August in the fall will hold. I did provide you with some statistics about past usage. Yeah?
What page? I'm sorry. Are we looking at the same one?
Yeah, page three. It's line 1721-000.
Okay, thank you.
So currently we have that budgeted at $463,500. It seems rather unlikely that we will come anywhere near that this year. So I provided you with some data for this past year as well as some data from 2014. A couple of concerns which I'm sure are already on your mind. Our paid parking is driven by outside visitation. And so we know it's really aligned with Dreams Park. Dreams Park has canceled their season. But other tourists make up a big chunk of that. And that's what's hard to predict in terms of who is coming. I am concerned that our interaction for parking is through a touchscreen. So currently to pay for paid parking, you interact with a touchscreen. That's true regardless of whether you're using a credit card or coins. If anybody's been to a grocery store recently, they know that's one of the areas that, you know, Sarand wrap and various other types of things are being used to cover. Our machines don't easily allow for that. So that's just something to keep in mind in addition to potentially not, you know, a lot of people being here. We certainly don't know when the Hall of Fame will open. You know, so these are all things that are really hard to account for. We also know that our business community in the paid parking area, there are a limited number of places that are even open right now. Those that are open are largely doing meal takeouts. So how many businesses we have left and what our summer looks like from that regard is important to consider as well. I wonder at this point, and this will eventually come to a dollar figure. I wonder at this point whether we should consider waiting and, and we don't have to make this decision tonight, but whether we should consider putting off paid parking till July 1st. Even if, you know, things start to reopen in May or in June, that gives everybody some time to get a little more comfortable, you know, to potentially think about how we deal with these kiosks that require people to touch them. And for our businesses to start on the road to being open again. I also suggest that because May and June, as you can see, have never been our strongest months. Before Dreams Park comes, we're very, very low, even after Dreams Park has started. Really until school has gotten out, we don't really pick up. It's hard to know because there's the potential that school will not restart, how that will all factor in. But that's, that's one thought that I've had. And then perhaps conservatively budgeting $10,000 a week for July, August, September, and the first week of October, that would put us at about 125.
I have a question.
Ellen, you're muted.
125 for on-street?
For both.
Oh.
Both. The only reason I question that is you obviously went back to 2014 and we generated 192,874. For those newer to the board, remember double day paid parking was instituted, I believe it was about 2006. And right off the bat, it became sizable in 2011 and 12, when there were questions by a prior board about eliminate and, you know, not having on-street paid parking. There was never a question of getting rid of double day paid parking. And I could see some alterations to the on-street paid parking, but double day will just, I think, become a a parking lot. If we don't have paid parking in there, it will become, it won't even be available for any tourists who do come. And it is different because it offers all, the option for all-day parking. So if someone wants to come to the hall and spend five hours, they could park there and not have to run out and feed a machine or whatever.
Yeah. And I, I agree with that. I just wonder, and I can only wonder, you know, at what point the Hall of Fame will, will reopen. Because if the Hall of Fame isn't open and our other businesses aren't open and bass and employees want to park in double day, that's, you know, that sort of is what it is. It's only when they're competing against other types of use that it becomes problematic.
You're muted.
I'm wondering when they're going to announce the cancellation of this year's induction ceremony. I mean, they have to be, we all have to be planning at this point if we're going to pull it off in July anyway. In any way, I'll just state my opinion. The curve is not going to come down any faster than it went up. So you're probably looking at two months from whenever it starts to go down from the plateau. If everybody maintains social distancing before we're, you know, quote, allowed to open some other normal functions. So I think we're not doing anything till July.
Can you hear me? Is there any thought, depending upon the state of the local economy in the middle of the summer, of actually not implementing paid parking on Main Street for the entire season? Or did I miss some of that?
No, Jim, I think that's, that's certainly something that as we get closer to knowing what July and August look like, the on-street part might be something to, to consider.
Remember that we, we implement starting Memorial Weekend traditionally in past years. And we actually don't tend to get much on Memorial Weekend because it's when the classic game is occurring. So there, that has been canceled. So that is a little different dynamic there, but it's the end of May before we start our season. Joe?
You know, it seems to me that we have a, we have competing issues here. One is economic or financial, and the other is health and safety. With respect to the kiosks being touchscreens, do we have, can our vendor tell us what kind of cleaner we can use on those touchscreens? And would the, the parking enforcement people make that part of their routine rounds to give that a swipe as we, you know, as they make their patrol? I think that might be a kind of a, with appropriate safety precautions for them. So that said, about the, 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 the safety issue, it seems to me that once the governor gives an all-clear for the resumption of the kind of activity that would occur here, why don't we just peg our startup to parking at that time? Is it, I mean, it's, it was simply not hard from our point of view to say to do that, would it? And that would give us, you know, avoid, you know, conflict with the public or confusion. We would say, we, we, we have been told we're able to go and we're going to start up this little, this is an important engine in our economy. It's not Boeing Airlines, but it's our paid parking revenue. So, but I think to do it appropriately and without confusion, we would just peg it to whenever this kind of activity is cleared for by the governor.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to second that. I think that's an excellent idea. I, if we, you know, paint with a broad brush here, I think that we're kind of risking unnecessarily losing funding and having our park, parking enforcement officers out with the appropriate sanitize, you know, sanitizing products. I think that's a good idea. I'd like to support that as well.
My, my concern is that I think the governor will, if I've been understanding his press conferences correctly, I think that there will be a in of the end of our pause. And where exactly tourism fits in that, it is hard to know. I don't know that there's going to be a clear answer. And when our businesses reopen, I think we want to do everything in our power to encourage people to come downtown. And I think that initially that's local people and then regional people. And then eventually the, the folks who typically are parking other than by
That's a good point of view, Cindy. For sure.
Could, if everyone after they speak would mute, because I understand now what everyone's saying about the feedback, if you're not speaking at that particular time. I just want to remind the board that we do have one more meeting that marked, ooh, April 27. And at that meeting, the changes that we kind of made tonight and decide on that evening become basically our adopted budget. We, what we finalize in two weeks is our budget because by New York State law, it, it is effective May 1st. That is when it is considered that the tax levy is, is drawn. So we do want um, uh, we do want to, um, not close any doors prematurely. I think that's a very good point, Matt. Um, but I think we also need to be a little realistic and whether, and make a decision. So we'll move past that one now, but I want everyone to be thinking about that for our next meeting. And actually come up with a figure. I had already dotted a figure down. Um, so I would like us all to be sort of somewhat in consensus and arrive at something we feel is realistic and how we, um, want to approach it. Um, and we will do that at our next meeting in two weeks. Moving on, um, we have the next one that I circled is still on revenues on page three. It is 2003, I'm sorry, 2002 double day field. Now, we're all, um, aware that we have already for, in this fiscal budget, refunded, um, some double day field rentals. Um, it was about, um, see if I can read my scribbles. 5,950 in the month of April, for month of April reservations, 5,000, approximately 680 for May reservations. And one tournament at the beginning of July for 2,200. So obviously those that, uh, a little over $11,000 is hitting this fiscal budget. But we need to also look at that line, uh, which we have increased, um, to, or we put in our tentative budget at 110,000. I think we do need to decrease our double day revenue line. I will now mute myself. Um, but is there someone, once, just wave your hand and I will, um, call on you? Uh, no, no one wants to speak on that? All right. Um, if you look back, we had budgeted 2019, 2013. That had been an actual jump. I think we were obviously, when we planned this budget a year ago, we're thinking that this would be an incredible summer of, uh, and potential for rentals, so that we would have all three slots every day taken. Um, looking back at other years, you know, I think that we should probably take that back to at least, um, 95,000. Or is there a different thought?
I think we should go lower.
Lower than that, okay. All right. Even looking back over what it was before, because you know, in, for instance, 2015, 16, we did 177,000. So I'm just trying to justify it a little bit. Anyone else?
I mean, I wonder if we'll be lucky to get one game a day.
Terry, could you tell us what our, um, our reservations now currently look at like for, um, July and August?
Well, I mean, June is typically kind of a slow month anyway, so there's not a ton scheduled in June other than weekends. Um, July is when, you know, we start around the middle of the month to get the tournaments. Um, usually induction weekend from Wednesday through Monday is booked by, uh, the Hall of Fame. So we don't see revenue there either. And then August is pretty much scheduled with tournaments. You know, right now I have not heard from the adult teams. The most of the teams that are canceling are, of course, the schools. They either, um, have been told their season's done for the year, um, or, um, they anticipate that's going to be the case. But those are mostly April and May. So, um, you know, right now we did have that one cancel in July. Um, but other than that, you know, everybody, I think the adult leagues that have tournaments are still hoping to play.
Anyone else?
Well, it's out, um, Terry, how long do, um, how long do the, uh, reservations go until? When do we stop accepting them?
Um, when, when, I mean, we keep taking reservations all year long, as long as there's open slots.
Got it. So it's going year round. I should think of like a percentage of loss, because I'm sure there are going to be more cancellations in July. I mean, you know, we're in kind of uncharted territory. It sounds like we're going to lose more than half of our reservations. So I think
Yeah, it's one of those things that's going to depend on how, how soon things open up and, you know, people are, are moving again. I mean, it's hard to predict beyond, you know, what you currently have orders for, so.
Certainly. I mean, the federal government's being ambitious with the, their hopes to reopen. But I think, you know, Governor Cuomo has been uh, pretty straight up about it, that we should be planning for the long haul here. I, I feel that that's really important.
I, I'm looking at this differently, and I've been following very carefully about six hours a day, going through the news feeds and everything else, reading the papers, uh, including the Wall Street Journal. I really don't think, whatever, even if, even if we had it all clear, completely all clear by August 1st, I just don't think people are in the mood to plan vacations. The people who typically come probably are worried about money and such. I really think we pretty much have to write off almost all of the vacate, all of the vacation revenue for this year. I really don't think just because we open up, people are going to come rushing in to fill, fill the vacuum.
And it, um,
Joe here?
Joe.
You know, Richard, I tend to agree with you. Um, and I'm not trying to play, you know, political pundit or anything, but it just seems to me that the financial, uh, damage, uh, that families are suffering, uh, make this discretionary trip-taking probably the the last thing on their agenda. So, uh, you know, our task, which is what I tried to do in my little memo to everybody, is to try to quantify what we think that hit would be. I, I identified the revenue sources, but left it to us to try to figure out, um, how much we're going to lose from those anticipated revenues. And I guess I would like to be conservative. Well, that is to say, expect to lose more than less. Um, the big challenge, of course, is however big that number becomes, um, our cutting is going to be that more severe. Um, we can get to those, the cutting issues, um, later, but I, I, um, anyway, so I, I think to be, well, and then the, the one thing that we have as a lubricant in our budget are, are surplus monies. Um, but in the memo, I tried to, you know, capture that uh, idea and that concern and how much is prudent for us to be, uh, relying on surpluses even in this, you know, kind of crisis situation. So, uh, what Richard says, I, it goes for me in terms of trying to be really conservative on anticipated revenues.
Um, Jim?
Uh, going to those same two points. I am, uh, and I don't know how the math works out. I'm not sure how much a hit the village would take. I would actually consider eliminating all paid parking for the entire season so that people will know in advance that it's not going to be there, that we have taken paid parking off the table as far as whatever happens in the village. They will not be able to say it was because of paid parking. Because everybody's on, this is very, very dicey situation. And we don't know how much we're going to make, and we don't know how much we're going to lose. But would that be our contribution to the business community? You're going to take it right off the table. In any advertising you do now, you can say that Cooperstown, New York has eliminated paid parking for the season. Come and visit Cooperstown if you can.
Jim, I find paid parking is actually an advantage to the businesses because it forces parking spot turnover. People come in, walk around for two hours, do their shopping and get out. Um, so I don't think paid, I think paid part, like I said, I think paid parking helps the businesses. Uh, it may not give them parking, a parking lot system for their, their staff, but that's something different.
I, I would
Okay, we're kind of going back to talking about, um, uh, paid parking. And we already sort of said that we're going to give, let that, mull that over. And in two weeks, I will have a little clearer picture. And everybody can come with an amount. At this point, we really need to kind of work through this budget or we'll be here most of this evening. Um, and right now we are specifically looking at double day field. And I, um, had posited an, uh, idea of 95,000, which, um, if you, uh, look at, you know, what we collected as of February, of course, as I say, 10,000, plus 11,000 has already gone back, those, that's in this fiscal year. So looking back at 2015, 16, I think it's very reasonable to bring it back well below 100,000. And I had suggested 95. If people feel we should be doing 85, I, we just need a number. Plug it in here so that we can make those corresponding cuts on the expenditure side.
So Ellen, is it true that right now we're at 85 minus 11 for, for this current year?
Terry, that is correct, right? That we have, we've opted to refund those April rentals and the May rentals and
Well, then the May rentals were only on request at this point because at the March meeting, we only did the month of April because that's how long the shutdown was for. So the April was 5970, the May was, right now, we're at 550 refund in dollars in refunds. And then 2200. So, um, the, and the 85,000 might be up slightly because that was an as-of number from February 26th, but so probably people have paid into March. Um, so I, I don't know how much more was into March. That was as of February 26th. But right now the total is 8720. I certainly expect more in May that have paid that will be refunded. But, um, you know, some of them were just holding out for a little while longer.
I, I mean, this, this may be pessimistic, but I'd go with 75.
Okay, then let's go with 75. 20, um, so that is a $35,000 less in revenue. So I'm sort of tallying all these and as we think about our expenditures. The next one that I had down from there, and if I jump a line and you had something earlier on your budget, just, um, speak up and, but I'm trying to work through this a little more quickly. Again, we're still on revenues, page three, 2003 Boat Wash Recreation. Um, we, if you note, we really didn't raise any funds last year. That is because there was a Chris grant that provided to stewards and we did not, um, pay them. They were through a grant, but they also did not, they would do the boat inspections, but they did not collect any boat inspection sort of fees. So that is why you're not seeing that. That was, um, through last summer. So I have lowered that from the 7,000 in the tentative to $400. That is a, a decrease of, or a loss of revenue of 6,600. Is everyone fine with that change? Okay, thank you. Um.
Let me ask a question. If we're still on the boat area, um, are we going to open our docks to public use this year? Are we, we are collecting fees? I guess we have all the fees in, uh, that at least we had a deadline to get fees in. Are we, have, does the state have something to say about whether we can operate our let the boat dock rental, uh, go forward?
The boat dock rental, I don't think much has been said, though there is, um, not an ability, private, um, marinas and boat, boat launch sites are not on the essential business list as released and updated at 8:00 AM last Thursday.
So that militates against our getting any, so far, we we, we don't have permission to get re- a revenue stream from our boat dock rentals?
I, I would say that we started collecting these before any orders went in. Um, people are aware that at this point, you know, we're not putting boats in the water. Again, well, I think this is another one, we're going to have to wait and see, you know, how, how quickly things get lifted. So, you know, hopefully we will have that.
Well, and, and there's just a point of clarification. There are people who rent boat slips and then there are people who launch boats, you know, day trippers who come in and launch their boats. Is there a distinction with the difference there, um, in terms of what the, what the state has to say about that? And are we, do we distinguish those? I guess, Terry, I'd ask, where, where do the boat a dock rental fees show up?
They're, they're above the double day line. They're 2001.
Uh, I got you. Okay. So that's a big, maybe that, I didn't mean to skip over that. What do you, what do we all think about that $50,000? If we, if we have a, um, a curtailed season, are we going to prorate and refund money? Are we not going to do that? Which is maybe okay. I mean, I have no particular point of view on it, but, um, we're offering a a, a dock for the price of, for the price we set, uh, with an expectation that people can use it for the season. So is, is, simple question, is the $50,000 at risk in some measure?
Or thoughts?
I mean, as someone who has a boat, this seems like one of the few recreational activities that someone can actually do while social distancing, right? You don't have to be within six feet of anyone except for your, you know, boating companions, uh, who presumably you may live with in any case.
Yeah, I, I love the logic of what you're saying, but if the authorities aren't permitting it, we just have to, we just have to know what is or is not permitted, I guess.
Terry, correct me if I'm wrong. If someone has a boat slip and they get first priority to renew it the following year, if they fail to renew it, it, it goes to sort of the waitlist, correct?
Correct.
So this is like a license fee for, for a football stadium seat. If you, if you want to give, no, you, you see, you hear what I'm saying. I don't think we need to cut these yet because the boaters will still want to put their boats in the water or have a chance of doing it, especially since our fees are so inexpensive. If they want a refund, oh, by all means, we should give them a refund without a problem. But if they, but if they do that, they have to understand they do not keep the reservation for next year.
Thank you, Richard. That, that was what I was indicating. So why don't we leave that one? We had skipped it already and gone to, where are we now? We're at, uh, I had moved down to, on that same page, still under Culture and Recreation, 2025 Beach Base, Three Mile and Ferry Springs. Now, I just want to put that out there, that I highlighted that as an area that I think we're going to see cuts. I think again, we're probably, I'd like to wait on that because I think we could sit here and kind of try and pull a figure out of the air. I think, let's give it two weeks. We'll have to recognize that at our March 27th meeting, we need to really be looking at those figures as well, whether we, you know, what do we do with, um, particularly Ferry Spring and Three Mile and, um, yeah, how do we open or close them or what? So I, I want everybody to be thinking about that. Let's move on because I think otherwise we're going to bog down here. Anything else on page three that any trustees had? Cindy?
I wondered up at the top, under real property taxes, interest and penalties, whether we may be ordered by the state of New York to amend a tax deadline? And whether that might affect the interest and penalties line in our budget? That, that's entirely hypothetical, but I, I wonder if that's coming.
Terry, is that interest and penalties under Deb, is that largely when we um put them on the um the roll at the end of the year if they're not paid? Where, what exactly is, is included in that interest and penalty?
Oh, I'll let Deb speak to that because they collect on that side.
The penalties are enacted every month, they are overdue. So the, for like, they don't pay in June, then there's five percent added then and the penalties keep incurring, incurring until they pay them.
Okay. Any other questions? Again, let's highlight that and I will make a mark on that and we will look at it again in two weeks. All right, anything else on page three? Going over to page four. Did anybody have anything? Any other revenue cuts? Cindy?
I wonder, uh, under licenses and permits, two-five-nine-one is parking permits. I assume depending on what we decide with parking, that may be down. Um, we still may sell permits for Fowler even if we were to follow Jim's suggestion and not do any on street. But it's just something, I think as we make a decision in two weeks, we're gonna need to adjust that line as well. And I wondered the same thing about park permits, which is two-five-nine-four, two lines below. Depending on what happens with uh Three Mile and Ferry, whether park permits may be down as well.
I, I think the other thing you're gonna have to look at is vending permits because you're, you know, half a, you got one event out of there too.
It seems that um, you know, park permits um last year we realized four hundred fifty-five, we'd only budgeted five hundred. Um, I think it would be easy to just drop that figure to like two hundred dollars right now if everyone's fine with that and not look at it again. Cindy, I see some nods. I don't know what happened to Richard. Kind of screen went, okay. So let's drop that to two hundred dollars, that's a loss of revenue of three hundred dollars. Okay, and we will come back in two weeks and think more about parking permits and vending permits under licenses and permits. Um, going down, others?
So it's fines and forfeitures, is that where parking tickets come into play?
Correct.
So, again, depending on what we do, there, there may be changes there. This is all interrelated. Then the last one I have on that page is the Hall of Fame game, which is two-seven-seven-one, under miscellaneous.
Yeah, I had that one as well. Um, I think that's too, I don't know how we're gonna call that because I know specifically um, they, someone on the Economic Task Force had reported in and at this point they were still contemplating the game. So, or, I'm sorry, the induction. It always says Hall of Fame game fee, but to a degree, it's uh more of our induction fee. If you want, I will confirm that with the hall. Yep.
Okay, and this would be next year's, remember, because um this year's um this year's, we haven't, you know, that this year's classic game would be in the current budget.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Uh, anyone else?
Ellen, is there any possibility that you could talk to the hall and get an idea what their timeframe for making decisions is going to be?
I don't think I, you know, someone from the hall sits on that committee. Um, so I don't think I would have any greater sway than what they're presenting at this time. Uh, page five.
Um, line three-zero-eight-nine, which is our, our government aid, depending on what we do in some other categories regarding reimbursables, that may change.
Um.
That's where the skylight money is. Three-zero-eight-nine-zero-zero-zero.
Mm-hmm. That is, isn't that our um uh skylight monies, is that what it is?
Most of it, most of it is the skylight.
Yeah, and the balance is, it'd be uh fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, yep.
Is, Deb, what it would be the balance in there, if, if two forty-five is the uh skylights, what is the fifteen thousand additional? Uh, so if we, we had uh, we thought about two hundred and sixty, I was just.
Hmm.
No, no one knows?
It, it's, it's two forty-five for the skylight and then fifteen for other things, so.
The others being.
You don't know? I, I guess the question I have is, why is this money, is, is this money at risk because of the virus?
It's only at risk if we take the skylight out of the, out of the expenses side. In other words, we put three something into expenses and the majority of that is reimbursable, so if we take that three out, which we haven't gotten to yet, then this line needs to change to reflect that.
Right, I would say that we do not need to take it out of here, this revenue line. Um, partly because uh in Governor Cuomo's budget that was passed, you did notice that uh the council's funds remained and in it, and they even still said the DRI, the down, you know, those uh funds. So uh, I feel that that is not potentially threatened. I will say on one of my calls today, there was questions about CHIPS funding and there was also, which would be, you know, thirty-five-zero-one, and it was um, that was indicated that that was still in there and that several of the municipalities who are on this call had received those funds too just recently. So, I don't know if that, that needs to be changed there. Is there anything else on page five? All right. So we haven't made, because we're still gonna be looking at things, but um essentially, you know, what we have kind of conferred on is about ninety-five, a hundred and one. So about a hundred and two, and we know that we will significantly probably look at um paid parking and some other things. So I really think we need to just for a walkthrough, try and eliminate about two hundred thousand in expenditures. Um, I'm sure we've all been looking at our budgets and have some potentials here. So, let's begin um with the uh page six. Are there anything on there?
If we uh reduce our paid parking number, then credit card fees, which is the very last line on this page, will be reduced proportionally.
Right, and so I think when we make that decision, I've got it highlighted, we will do that. I think it's kind of um arbitrary to lower it now if we don't know how much we're lowering our paid parking. Um, so moving to page seven.
Before we leave this uh page, in, in terms of, wait, our, our personnel are not on this um on this page, are they? I, I guess let me make a general question. It, noticing how this uh CARE Act is working, um, in the private sector at least, they're providing for unemployment compensation. Um, and I guess my question is, we have our employees that we're trying to preserve intact on our payroll. Are we going to beget, will municipalities such as ours be getting any CARES Act money uh to compensate for the fact that we pay everybody full-time for the, well, we, we, we have a full-time roster and they're working half-time. Um, so with the productivity of our workforce has been reduced by that much. Well, there, is there any notion, I don't know the act well enough for what the state is.
Right. I, I think we're really not going to get into staffing discussions. First of all, we have, and that's all in, you know, the budget uh for this year, is where that's impacting now. And we budgeted for those personnel lines. I will also let Terry as head of personnel um speak to that.
Well, you know, this is the reduction so that we have fifty percent of the staff on one week, fifty percent on another. And some people working from home, um, it, it came down from the governor's office. Um, some of those um positions are essential, classified as essential staff, but nonetheless, there still is the expectation that you're gonna have that reduction to um, you know, hopefully prevent any kind of spread. If one person in a two-person in a department gets sick, it would prevent the other person from being infected and that's why the scheduling was done the way it was. It's also part of the governor's executive order that the time that the person is not working does not get charged to their accumulated time and they get paid as if they're here. And I will say for the most part, you know, the people that are not here right now are, you know, a lot of them are doing work from home. So, and the people in the DPW departments are on call. If there's a reason for an entire department to be staffed at any particular time, then it is. Um, otherwise, we're holding to and expected to hold to the fifty percent. Um, we also are keeping track of that in the event that there, whether it's from the state or federal government, there is some reimbursement for that time.
Uh, I, I know we're um, I, I don't wanna dwell on this, but I just wanted to pick up on one of the issues that came up at the wastewater treatment plant where there are our, our operation.
Though I, I would like to, um, and we can talk about that further. Um, uh, but right now I wanna go through the budget.
Okay, yep.
Um, so where were we? We're on page seven, anything? Moving on to page eight is the first time I have something. Anybody else? Cindy?
On page seven, we can take out the audio uh video recording equipment because we purchased that.
Yep.
It's not a huge, it's something.
Remind me, where's that line again?
It's uh under Clerk, one-four-one-zero dash two hundred.
Okay, there we go. So we're taking that back to zero?
Yes.
All right. Nothing else on seven, move to page eight. First thing I had, and I've sort of uh, I know chatted with some of you, and that is um about uh two-thirds of the way down the page, sixteen-twenty-four-eighty buildings, twenty-two Main Street repair. Um, removing the windows at eighty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Everyone in concurrence? And Mitch, if you could just chime in, there's a fifteen thousand miscellaneous. Um, is there something in particular that we're looking at that for? Or you find that we routinely need that, that's fine, but just can we know a little more about miscellaneous fifteen thousand?
Miscellaneous is just unforeseen repairs that come up throughout the year. You could probably reduce it and, and since I've been doing this, there's, you know, it's not quite fifteen thousand dollars. If you wanted to reduce it to maybe seven, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay.
Know that there's no bookshelves in this budget, though.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, for the uh historian books.
Yep. Okay, so that takes it down um ninety-two thousand. Or, well, it brings it, the line down, but uh we'll hit, we'll have saved ninety-two or cut ninety-two thousand in expenditures.
Can we get rid of refinishing the kitchen and janitor closet floors? Put that off for a year?
Yes, I, I'd be comfortable putting that off another year.
All right. So that is a total of a hundred thousand, oh no, I'm sorry. That is seventy-five, oh, I'm sorry, seven, we saved seventy-five, didn't we? Yep, so an additional three thousand. Okay.
Thirty-three, that's ninety-six thousand you saved.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else on that page? Page nine?
Um, under traffic control?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's always nice to have new street name signs, I think we could take out that four thousand dollars, that's line thirty-three-ten-two-hundred.
Thank you, Cindy.
And under fire department, we had a lot of debate about that traffic control device.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we did not, however, put the cleaning fee for the fire hall in this budget and Mitch knows the exact number, dollar figure for that, but my suggestion is for this year, get rid of the traffic control device, but add the cleaning fee.
The dollar amount for the cleaning fee is forty-one-sixty. Now it'd go under three-four-one-zero-four-six-one. So I know we're supposed to be cutting, but that's something that's got to be added.
Mitch, say that figure again, please.
Forty-one-sixty.
And how much?
No, that is four thousand one hundred and sixty.
Okay.
The, Cindy, the traffic control device, we put in at four thousand dollars. Is that what you're saying, we could cut?
Yes.
All right. So, that's four thousand there, but then we went up four there.
Right.
All right. Anything else on page nine? Page ten?
Um, very top, I would take out the LED lighting upgrade and miscellaneous repairs to four thousand.
Can you remind us what that LED, I had that circled as a cut, and I just wanted to remind people what we would be cutting.
That's changing out the lights in the engine bay, um, both to address a lighting situation, but also energy efficiency.
In the engine bay? All right. Um, I went down to the ambulance category, forty-five-forty. Now I will grant you that their budget um is not all that high. However, we are aware that um they have received a significant um donation and uh we have just funded their two new ambulances. Um, we, I feel something here could be purchased with their funds and whether that's under the equipment, um, forty-five-forty dash two hundred or um, let's see, I was also looking at forty-five-forty dash four-ten, some of the materials and supplies, are there any thoughts?
I would, I would include in that number the steel rims, which are on forty-five-forty-four-nine. I would, I would include in that number, the steel rims, which are on forty-five, forty, four, nine. That's an extra set of rims for the snow tires.
I, I, other than that, I would request that we. Think about whether or not we want to take what they got as a contribution, as a donation. And turn it around and basically say, thank you for funding this yourself. It, it, one, it defeats the purpose of them going out and raising money. For them. Two, I'm afraid that the person who donated it is going to hear about it and be upset about it. And I, I just, I just think, let's think about that one instead of cutting it right now.
Second that, Richard, I think that for now we should look at other areas to make reductions before we make cuts at the fire department.
Okay. Cindy, did you want to comment at all on the bequest?
Well, the, the individual who made the bequest is deceased, so she won't hear about it and didn't have any family. So that's why it was such a sizable bequest, but I mean, your point is taken. I do think the steel rims are sort of an extra that.
I agree with you. I agree with you on that, Cindy.
Okay, so the only thing we're looking to cut from basically the ambulance category is the steel rims at two thousand, four hundred. Is that correct? Everyone good?
And we could think about this again. How much money was donated, Cindy?
Uh, two hundred thousand dollars.
All right, well, that makes me think a little differently.
I thought it might, Richard.
Well, I needed to know that number.
Okay.
I have it on the steel rims. The argument was it was going to make the tires last longer and so actually save money in the long run. So.
I concur and I understand, you know, it also. An extra set of rims means you aren't having to take tires off a rim and remount them.
Right.
I, I see that as something with their funds. If it, it was that critical, they could also do.
Okay.
All right, so we, we can think about that again. Again, we've got two weeks, so if anyone has any, I think, difference there. Moving on to page eleven.
Um, under street maintenance. Five, one, one, zero, dash, four, six, zero. We've talked a lot about painting the lamp posts, but I don't think it's necessary this year. We could reduce that.
Thank you, Cindy, for volunteering that. I had my little mark by it.
And under streets, permanent improvement, line. One, one, two, four, four, zero. Um, I think we need to have a talk about this, but I do think, you know, we could. This year not, not do as much paving or as much sidewalk. I think. That the Pioneer Street sidewalk is critical and I think. Ideally putting all, but at least putting something into TEP is important. Could we push back the Beaver Street sidewalk and the River and Elk paving? You know, potentially because our, our parking revenue is going to be down regardless of what we come up with, that number is going to be down.
That would have been my recommendation to remove basically a hundred and one thousand from that line. Is there any discussion?
No.
No, I concur with Cindy. Pioneer Street's got to stay, though. I've heard from a lot of folks.
Yeah, but the Pioneer Street is, that one's very important. So I think we could take out Beaver, River and Elk.
Beaver.
Oh, Elk as well. So now we're at a hundred and eighteen, correct?
So all we have left in there is nine thousand.
Yeah.
And I think it makes a good argument. It makes a good point. Parking pays for our street improvements.
Exactly, exactly. All right, anything else on page eleven? Page twelve. I was feeling, and we can go back up because I'm jumping to the bottom to the second last on parks maintenance, the Ferry Springs survey. I recognize it's important, but I think if there's a support group that really would like to see that done, that's a nice little chunk they could do. Fund the survey. Okay, all right, so three thousand out of seventy-one, ten, dash, four, forty. Parks Maintenance Contract Professional Technical Services. Anything else on page twelve?
I, I wondered under generally when we are able to make a decision about the park season. Whether some of those numbers get reduced because they're used, but I realize we can't make that decision quite yet.
Cindy, what, what one in particular are you looking at?
Well, I mean, things like paper products and the maintenance that goes into three mile and Ferry Spring to get them ready for the summer. You know. God forbid we find ourselves in a position where we're not opening at all this summer. So those things are going to be drastically reduced.
Drastically reduced, but can be eliminated completely because we're going to be in the same situation a year from now.
Correct.
Mia, just to orient me, when we're looking at parks maintenance at seven, one, one, zero. Are, is that, is all of that maintenance deferable or is that what you're suggesting we're going to do? The painting of the handrails. Resurfacing bathroom floors and tree work and so forth. Is that something we can defer or have you decided that? I may have missed what you were saying.
Um, anything I would keep out of that line would be just the tree work if we're going to defer to the next year.
Jean and Mac, could you please mute if you're not going to talk because interference is going up?
Mitch, can you say that again, please?
He, he said the only thing he would cut out of there would be the tree work in addition. So that's forty-five.
I would keep the tree work.
Oh, I'm sorry. And you would keep the tree work. You would get rid of the resurface, the bathroom floors.
Yes, and the painting of the handrails and I would keep the tree work just as a preventative measure.
Okay, good, because that was the one I saw as well as being needed. They don't fall on our buildings.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so that takes essentially ten thousand out of that line total. The two thousand for the handrails, the three thousand for the survey and the five thousand for the floors. All right.
Does our, um, the very next item, the, the Porta John, what will, is that a volumetric thing? If, if we are going to be reduced, what do we expect to use full five thousand dollars worth of? If I'm looking at that correctly.
The Porta Johns are for Badger Park where there is no bath toilet facility.
Yes. Sorry, Alan.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mitch.
As of now, I have moved the, the, uh, Porta John from Badger Park to Lakefront Park because I'm not sure when we're going to get that. The bathrooms at Lakefront open. So that's kind of essential, yes.
Okay. Moving on to page thirteen. And feel free if I jump over, the first thing I sort of had marked was, um, under park summer rec and of course. Some of this may really. Change, you know, depending, we may not need the lifeguard equipment or ropes and buoys. But right off the bat, I'd like to sort of wait. I'm going to keep that highlighted. Right off the bat, I'd like to take out the four grills. For fifteen hundred.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. And again, we will come back in two weeks. Not that some of these decisions are going to be that much easier, but I think we're also. We've made some significant cuts with building and, and streets, so we'll get a revised budget from. Deb and have a clear understanding what our gap is there and what we need to kind of work on, yeah. So is there anything?
It's, this is just Joe, on, on the dock installation, you know, are we, uh? Do we have a go, no-go point where docks get installed or not?
I will let Mitch answer that.
At this point, I don't have the manpower with everybody being down to fifty percent to put the docks in now. So I am not, at this point, I'm not ready to put docks in until everybody's back to, we're back to a full staff.
So if that's the case, is there? We, we, that's just too indefinite to, to make a cut?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember that right now, um, this pause is continuing through the end of this month. If it is extended, we're going to have a clear indication in two weeks.
I wondered at the top of the page, seven, one, one, zero, four, eight, zero, Parks Maintenance Repairs. I know we've all been wanting a water fountain at Lake Park. One, I, I think it's an extra, maybe we can put off and two, I wonder how many people are going to be using public water fountains.
Exactly.
All right, so let's cut twenty-five hundred from Park Maintenance Dash Repair. If there's nothing else on thirteen, let's move on to fourteen.
Under double day equipment. I can't speak to this with great authority. But I wonder about the pressure washer and the gator, whether those are essential this year or whether they can be put off for the future.
Mitch?
I think those are both two items that can be put off till the future, along with the broom. I think we have some money left over from, uh, unused salt reserves this year, or we can get another broom and have it on hand for next year.
So that means we're cutting eighty-eight hundred for the gator, uh, four thousand for the washer and four hundred and fifty dollars for the broom.
Correct.
The broom also appears on page twelve under snow removal and it can be removed there as well.
So four hundred and fifty out of line five, one, four, two, dash, two hundred.
Yeah, because we split it between double day and streets. It's about a thousand dollars for a broom.
Okay.
Four, seven, one, four, oh, dash, four, one, oh. I think we can cut this proportional to how many games we lose approximately be correct.
Yes, I think when we make a decision on double day, that'll be sort of, they'll be correlated.
So the idea is to make some proportional reduction once we have a little more information?
Correct.
And I guess that could also be influenced by, uh, materials on hand that may have carried over from last season.
And I think the same would be true for seventy-one, forty, dash, four, eighty, the double day field repairs, which is really calculated. Times the number of games. You'll know two hundred and ninety-seven games times fifty, so that is another one that will be looked at when we make a decision on our. Double day revenue. Anything else on page fourteen? Fifteen. It's my understanding that, um, the band concerts will not be going forward. Or will they?
I, I asked Rich McCaffrey to hold off until we talked about it tonight, but what he said was if. If they. If he has all of the bands re. Decide to play next year, same schedule, then we don't have to pay them this year. If they, if we cancel. We kind of have to pay them, but if we can schedule them for next year instead, we don't lose any money, so we should probably do that.
Well, I would, I haven't seen the contracts, but this is a force majeure. I, I don't. See how we're, we're canceling because of a national or a state emergency. That's not something typically that leaves a contract enforceable, so. Not that we want to be. Unfair or anything, but that, we just shouldn't operate with that idea in mind that we somehow are obligated to, uh, pay them if we cancel. I mean, Martin needs to look at it perhaps, but that's my understanding of force majeure. This is a classic case of it.
So.
Go ahead, Jean.
I, I think we need to, unfortunately, probably just make a decision and do it. As opposed to waiting till it gets closer to see.
I agree and I think we should basically cancel it. If, if it comes to that, we could put, put on something later. We can scramble to see what we can do then. But right now we need the money.
I would agree that we should make the cut.
Is there consensus on that then? Everybody wants, now are we removing? The community band as well because they're kind of a separate item at sixteen ninety-five or are we? Just doing the total of forty-six?
That was my intent.
I think we should do them both. Get rid of them both.
All right.
Under for street cleaning. I'd like to suggest that we reduce our tipping fee to five thousand. That we eliminate the extra big belly garbage can. And that we reduce garbage bags to three thousand. And as much as I love to plant trees under shade trees, I think we should eliminate the planting budget for this year.
Ten thousand, yes, I had, or so, taking that out. Is the feeling that we can't make any cuts because it, it amounts to, um, thirty-three, thirty-four, five. Under the shade trees, the cutting, trimming, pruning, stump removal. Can we, can that be reduced?
I, I think there's two issues. One is, is the amount of our budget we need to designate to trees to remain a tree city designation. Which I meant to look up, but I forgot to do that. I think without that ten, we're pretty. We're pretty close, but I can check that for next time we meet. But honestly, we haven't done our trimming yet for this year. So, um, I, it, I think we might actually be paying for. In other words, the trimming money for this year is currently in our surplus because we haven't done any. So I think that we need to keep it in for next year or we're going to be dealing with a lot of maintenance.
Is this, is the trimming, um, do we tend to do that? I noticed that quite a few trees, um, have been trimmed in the village. Including mine in front of my house, um, little branches caught, I assume. Is that our village crew doing that, Mitch?
Yes, whatever we can reach from the ground, we will do.
Okay.
I actually scheduled, uh, Tallman to do the rest of our trimming and removal this morning, but he is still considered non-essential, so. Who knows when that will take place?
Right. I think Cindy, when you're looking at that budget, don't just think about what we're paying for contract and professional services. There's obviously village employees dedicating time to plantings and, uh, and trimmings. Just in part of the big picture.
Yeah, unfortunately, the question is specifically about our budget, but we could probably make a special case this year.
All right, any other, um, things we want to be looking at on page fifteen? Sixteen. I would like to zero in on the very first line, eighty-seven ten dash one hundred. Reserve Natural Resources, this is under the boat wash as I mentioned before. We benefited last year from that crisp funding, which really is going to, not us, but there, we're one of the locales where they will assign two stewards. So that you will notice that we did not really utilize our two thousand nineteen twenty adopted budget funds. We're a little unsure exactly what might exist this year, but we felt very comfortable of decreasing that to about ten thousand and lopping twenty thousand. And the, if we do that, Deb, when you do the, the calculations for this budget revision two weeks, you obviously are going to want to, eighty-seven ten dash four forty, if I'm not mistaken, those are pretty much the seven point six five percent of the salaries for the employer share of Social Security and Medicare. So on a ten thousand, that obviously goes down at two thousand two ninety-five.
Correct.
Thank you. Alright, anything else on page sixteen?
Is, is that true for the workers' comp as well under boat wash, that that number will decrease on a percentage basis?
Yes, it does.
Yep. Anything else on sixteen? Seventeen? Okay, that is pretty much gotten us through the A fund. And we'll have Deb revise all those figures. Give us sort of where we're at now, and we're coming back, we know, in two weeks to really look more closely at our paid parking, etc. So when we get those hard copies in the mailbox, I guess, it's, for me, it's always easier, and I'm sure most of you know where from a hard copy, so I'm sure Terry will let us know, and we can grab them from her and look them over again before our next meeting. Cindy?
Can I just, this is related to the budget, but at the same time, not related to the budget. In conjunction with paid parking, I think we think about the role of the trolley this summer.
Oh.
The two go hand in hand. Again, if the hall is not open, I don't see a reason to be running the trolley. And even if the hall is open, I don't know how many people are going to be comfortable taking public transportation if they can find a parking place downtown, and I think that we will probably have parking places downtown. So, you know, at this point, I don't want to say cancel the whole season, but I think we need to have in our minds that there may be a drastic reduction in trolley operations. And at our next meeting, I think we need to be prepared to talk about that.
Thank you, Cindy, yeah, and I know we talked about that, that if you could provide a little more data for that meeting, it would be helpful so that everyone can assist in that decision.
I, I think the one thing that I want to say now, because our trolley budget can be a little confusing to look at, and as Joe pointed out, it looks like we're in a deficit, but I can assure you that we won't be spending seventy thousand dollars between now and the end of, of May. Our, our trolley is largely funded, it's an enterprise fund, so what is in trolley stays in trolley. And it is largely funded through STOWA, which is State Transportation Reinvestment. The formula for that is based on mileage driven as well as passengers riding. So two years ago, we, we talked very specifically about the fact that we were operating at a deficit, and we were operating at a deficit because not enough people were riding the trolley to make the formula work for us. In other words, our, our expenses were more than, significantly more than our reimbursement plus our ticket sales. Last year, we were in a much better place in terms of balancing that out, and that's why we kept looking at those delta numbers in terms of the increase in passengers. But our trolley system only works if we have passengers. It doesn't work if we only have miles. The reimbursement just doesn't cover our costs for the drivers, for the gas, for all those sorts of things. So that, that's why this, making this decision is difficult, but it's going to be important that we make it one way or the other.
Great, Cindy, and if you could, because I know at one point you were talking about when to, if, kind of several factors. If you could almost paint the scenarios and prepare for that for our next meeting, you know, do we just eliminate, you know, and don't only have trolleys July and August? Do we not have them at all, all those sort of scenarios? I think it will make it a little easier for the board as a whole to make a decision.
Alright, that was pretty much it. I know Richard had something he wanted to discuss, which did not get on the budget. So, Richard, if you wanted to speak to your proposal?
Yeah, I wanted us to have a discussion on enforcing the governor's social distancing laws, and whether we wanted to do a local ordinance on wearing a mask, or at least putting something out to the public, because this community's, a lot of people, community-driven regarding the masks. I think it makes a difference, not to the person wearing the mask, but to everybody else around them. And I think that it's a part of the social responsibility. A lot of people are wearing masks. I was walking yesterday on Main Street, and granted, you don't really need a mask if you're not within six to ten feet of people, especially outside, but nobody was, almost nobody was wearing a mask. I also find that there are groups of people not social distancing. I still find kids, yesterday there were a group of kids playing tennis. I can't believe they were all with, all from the same household. So my thoughts are, we should have the police pulling people over and warning them. And if that seems to work, great, and if not, I think we need to start fining people. Any comments?
I'm not sure, oh, sorry, someone else talking?
Yeah, let's go.
Let's agenda.
I would think that if there was a little temporary signage put around Main Street, you know, even if we have to just tie it with a wire tie, something for a while, just to update people on what we'd like to happen. I, I'm not sure about the fining, but, but, you know, a little something more than what we're doing now may not hurt.
Sorry, I had to, had on mute. So yeah, I'm not for having our village police officers just pulling people over as a means of informing people. I think if we could consider some cheap and not permanent signage, that's not a bad idea. And I'd also, of course, sign on to a public statement from you, Ellen, or from the Board of Trustees, and you all together to our, to the Daily Star, to Alziggo. But I think, you know, in investing a lot of time in pulling people over, anything like that, while I certainly agree with the sentiment that we need to encourage people to take those precautions, I just, I don't think we should take necessarily that step specifically.
Jim?
Not, not knowing how long this is going to last, you know, if we start to go a few months into the summertime, and then we come up against the county's position that if you're coming into the county, you need to self-isolate for fourteen days, how do we deal with all that? That's a whole separate issue, I hope it's not going to go that far, but there are some complexities to all of this. And public health, of course, being number one.
I, I will say that while I, I wouldn't support our police going out of their way, for instance, you know, pulling people over. I do think when they encounter groups of people who, I mean, it's always hard to tell whether people are in a family situation or in a co-living situation, but it's certainly providing a reminder, if they can do so without jeopardizing their own safety, that, you know, social distancing is what is expected at this point in time, seems to make, seems to make sense. Because I will say, I walk my dogs every night, and most people are social distancing. Many people wear masks, but occasionally there are groups, particularly of young people, although I wouldn't single out young people, who, you know, for whatever reason, are, are not, and I think a gentle reminder is important in those situations.
Terry, I know that, you know, we have spoken to the police, and they have, when they've seen people sort of congregating, spoken to them, many times they find it is a family unit of four or five people. And so they just sort of try and educate them. I am not opposed, you know, I'm, I would imagine that maybe the Alziggo County Health Department, you know, they have, they always put out the same CDC guidelines, you know, wash your hands, social distance, wear a mask if you can't, you know, have a six-foot distance from other people, etc. They might even have some signage that we could see posted in the village. I'm not at all keen on a punitive measure. Actually, this morning, I, I did a proclamation in called Lights On For Support, and basically something that's been done on other communities where our porch lights are put on at night, at dusk, and left on all night in recognition of all the essential workers, not just the Bassett Hospital employees who are very much on the front lines and of whom we're very appreciative, but the essential workers selling our food at the Price Chopper, manning the pharmacy, or all those other essential workers. So it's, it's a way for our community to show that we are working together on this, and there are strong bonds in our community. We do appreciate everything that everyone is doing at this difficult time. So I'm sort of sensing, do people feel a little more signage, just reminding people of the regulations? I will have to say, I'm much like Cindy, I walk my dog a lot, and I have very amazed that, you know, I'm always, because I have a dog, I'll walk off, you know, onto the street or across the street. I think people are very respectful of distances, and when I've gone to the Price Chopper, everybody has had a mask on, so I'm, I feel safe in that respect. But I could see about additional signage, which is not a bad idea, particularly if we get any sort of loosening, and, but we, we do want to stay alert, we can't let our guard down here.
Yeah, I would say that I generally agree with the lighter touch. There's already an esprit camaraderie about being healthy and respectful, and, you know, we have a sign on the fire department that talks about staying safe, and I think we can repeat with that. But the other thought I had, which is, would maybe be a little more of an expense, but whenever our banner polls go up, I, I wouldn't mind a public service announcement of, you know, wash your hands, keep your distance, and so forth and so on. But this should all be about uplift, not hammer coming down, that's how I see it. And I think most people in our village are living that way, which is pretty inspiring to me.
Joe, I like that idea for the banner polls, which hopefully will be new features relatively soon. I think we could be prepared for that with some, some appropriate messages.
I would, we cut so much more budget. Where, what, because I know how much banners cost, having gotten them for several organizations. Who would sort of like to spearhead this idea? The wording and investigative, etc.
I certainly put something together after speaking to our T E P P size that's appropriate, because I would have to go back and look, but I would certainly want input, particularly in terms of the message from the rest of the group.
Alright, well, why don't you begin part of that investigation with size, potential cost, and wording?
Cindy?
Alright.
If you need research or assistance, let me know, I will contribute to that.
Yeah, happy to collaborate on that, for sure.
Thank you very much. What I love about this board, we're all helping out there, it's very appreciated. So as far as I have, that is the conclusion of our meeting tonight. Is there anything else, anyone needed to add? No? Well, thank you all, I think this, we've sort of, I don't know if we've one hundred percent mastered the technology, but I think it worked very well, and I appreciate everyone committing to their elected role as a trustee. Joe, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just one quick, when we finish up, can we circulate, sort of like the thermometer, how much we have identified to cut and how much more we have to go, and will we can look? I've been taking notes, but I don't know if I have it accurately.
I'd like to say, if we could get a rounded number.
That Deb will revise the budget with what we've done thus far, and give us a clearer idea of what kind of discrepancy we still sort of have. And we know those areas where we're going to be looking at some additional cuts. So we're going to get like a revision before our two-week meeting, our meeting in two weeks, when it's going to be, that's it, that's what we will have to vote and approve that budget then, because it's locked in by May first.
Does anybody have a number written down next to them? I should have done this myself. Just an idea of what the number of the cuts we made tonight is, what it totals, because I know we were shooting for two hundred thousand, and I'm wondering how close we got to that this evening.
We actually got sort of up there, but what you have to remember is, I, well, I was sort of saying that, but I think we made some bigger revenue cuts than I had anticipated, and we also have another revenue cut. So I think Deb can send out an email of every, you know, you cut this much from expenditures, you decreased revenues by this much. If she could just send that tomorrow morning to all the board, then we would have that. And then she will put together the revised one that we can utilize in two weeks. Is that good?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Alright, if that is it, we will adjourn this meeting, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second by Richard, all favor. Thank you all so much, I appreciate everything.
Thanks, good night.
Night, everybody.